Good evening, everyone. I'd like to help you into our January 28th, I'm sorry, yeah, January 28th meeting, the Board of Education, call it 6:02 PM. If I can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Benitez.
Here.
Ms. Shemrin.
Here.
Ms. Stephen.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Nordstrom.
Here. Thank you. Could all please stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Glad to see so many faces here tonight. We'll move right into our student, staff, and community celebrations, ZB Pride Awards. Starting with Mr. Wyland.
Good evening, members of our Board of Education. I am very happy to bring up, bring people up to the podium who exemplify all the wonderful attributes of being a Pride Award winner. We're going to start with our staff awardee, Ms. Jennifer Benjamin. Why don't you come on up here? So, for those of you who don't know, Ms. Benjamin has been in our district for 22 years. She started as an earth science and ecology teacher here at ZB, moved on to be a division chair and department chair of science, physical education, family and consumer science, and health, all here at ZB. And we are so, so lucky to have her back in the classroom at Zion Benton East. She finally gets to teach biology, which is like what she wanted from the very beginning. And boy, do we love having her on our staff. She has a lot of teacher beliefs that I think we can all agree are what we're looking for for all of our students. She believes students have the right to have productive struggle. And as a math teacher myself, I understand how often students say, "Mr. Wyland," or "Ms. Benjamin, I don't understand. Give me the answer. Just tell me what to do." Right? They always just want to know what to do. But a good teacher is always going to answer that question with another question and scaffold that question and see if she can get students to understand on their own and discover what it is that she's trying to teach them. She believes in having students be good problem solvers, to emphasize critical thinking skills. She really believes in the spiraling curriculum, so you keep revisiting those topics to remember them and have higher retention. She believes in the importance of active engagement. You won't see Ms. Benjamin lecturing to her students and getting sit and get. Students are always doing something and actively engaged. And she loves that aha moment from her students. She's also a teacher leader. She spent many years at both schools on our CIP committees, Equity and Inclusion Committee. She's been a part of and spearheaded a lot of curriculum reform and next generation science standards, and led many efforts now, as well as back in the day. She did a lot to incorporate ACT skills in practice. She's a true leader, and she does a lot of student tutoring. And she's just great with kids, so organized. She's an excellent communicator. Mr. Hutchison, our academic success coordinator, she's in close contact with him about any students that need interventions or need help, and does a great job communicating with everybody. So, thank you so much. We are very proud of you, and congratulations. And all of you and your family are welcome to stay. We have an excellent finance committee. Update a little bit later, but if you want to go because they're bedtime, feel free, no problem. I'd like now to welcome up our student Pride Award winner, Tatiana Fleming. We are so, so proud to have Tatiana here as our Pride Award winner for this month. She is an awesome student, overcoming many obstacles. She has fantastic grades, excellent attendance, and she is a model student. She's so kind. Every time I see Tatiana in the cafeteria or in the hallway, she always shoots me a smile. She's always happy to be there. And there's no better student who upholds ZB pride. Her perseverance, her responsibility, her integrity, her diversity, and empowerment. Many of the staff could say many great things about Tatiana, but I'd like to invite up to the podium her staff aide that's with her every day, Yessenia Zamora, to speak about her.
My name is Yessenia Zamora. I am a former ZB, and I graduated in 2016. I came back in 2024 to, I guess, alleviate a care for Tatiana. I just want to say that this past year, I have seen Tatiana grow tremendously as a student. I don't want to cry. Despite her circumstances, she is an amazing student. I enjoy working with her every single day. I could be having a bad day, and her smile, it takes all my worries away. I know she's going to go far in life. I know she's going to accomplish a lot, and we pretty much have a lot in common. I know she wants to go into social work, and she really challenges me to really continue school and go and finish my counseling and psychology degree, just because I look up to her and I have a lot, a lot of her stuff for her because she struggles throughout the day, but I know she can, she can do it. She's going to go far.
Tatiana, never stop believing in yourself. You can do whatever you want in your life, and we at Zion Benton East believe in you. We're proud of you, and we can't wait to see where life takes you. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we can use the wireless. Principal Felsky, thanks. Hello. Good evening. Would you like me to use this microphone or just talk?
Yes, please.
Microphone? Is that better? All right. So, tonight, it's my honor to recognize one student and one staff from Zion Benton. So, we'll start with the staff as well. We'll keep what Mr. Wyland just did here. So, I would like to ask Mr. Jeff Sevner to come on up to the podium. Really, what I wanted to point out is Mr. Sevner has been a phenomenal educator in our district from our English department for 18 years, teaching anything from AP language, AP, let's see, language to English language, mythology, rhetoric, English on every level. But where he really shines is in that journalism class, correct? That's, that's awesome. So, I wanted to bring him up because from the very start of the school year, I made it very clear that we had certain school improvement goals that we were trying to work on this year. As far, number one goal was improving the climate and culture of ZB, right? And we talked about that. He came into my office almost like the first day of school saying, "I'm here to help. I'm here to offer my parallelism students. I'm here to offer whatever help we can to make ZB better." And he really embraced the goals of like improving attendance, improving academics, and improving our culture and climate. So, I just brought a couple of samples. So, all year, he's been working with me and consistent. He didn't leave me so far. Every month, he will be putting out newspapers such as these things. You know, we focus on the rules. We had grade level meetings. He has his students interview me extensively and write everything we're doing. Just this last week, it was planned for semester success. This is, this is peer-on-peer, you know, teaching people how we can be successful at Zion Benton, we can raise our, you know, behavior, our levels of academic achievement, all of these things. So, I couldn't do this without him lending his talents in journalism to our school, our newspaper, the ZB video that we are now doing in partnership with Mr. Angel. All of these things are awesome, and I just want to say thank you, Mr. Sevner, for being an awesome part of our, our staff. All right, there you go, Mr. Jeff Sevner. Thank you very much for coming. All right. Now, we'll move on to our outstanding student, and so I would like to bring up Ms. Faith Hudson. All right. I want you guys to take a very nice look at Faith here, and she's your typical honor student, and you see her beautiful crown, and she's brought other queens with her as well. But what's really important to recognize today is this is not why I chose Ms. Faith, right, as our ZB Award winner this month, okay? She's beautiful, wonderful, outstanding student, taking AP courses. She's involved in majorates and twirling and all of those things. But this year, or this month, I decided to focus on, let's, let's look for kids who give to their community, who give back, because we focused on outstanding athletes, we focused on outstanding people that get, you know, grades and scholarships. I wanted to look for someone who stands out in their community and really wants to make a difference, landing on Faith. So, even though we love Ms. Cornerstone of Illinois, who will be competing for Ms. Illinois in June, so she has a high list of accomplishments, but honestly, giving back to the community is what she's excelling at. Her platform is really working with drowning, right, and preventing drowning, and she's working with, with her harbor marina to further that. So, I just wanted to celebrate that we have students that are doing great things in school, and when I looked, I didn't have to go far to find one who's also doing great things outside of school for our community. Faith wanted to just say six seconds, if we can all indulge her. Absolutely. Ms. Cornerstone, welcome.
Hi, I'm Faith. My platform is drowning prevention. My brother Jordan passed away in 2006 from a drowning incident at North Point Marina, and my, it's a really deep cause to my heart. And I'm really promoting to build more signage down by the lakefront, especially at Camp Logan and Marina, and hopefully I can get into Zion as well and beach park areas. But my platform is basically is just to promote signage, and I'm partnering with Ms. North Point McCara, and we are working on building kiosks to be scattered throughout the beaches so they can have information. And also, I'd like to set a Facebook page dedicated to people who have lost their lives to drownings.
It's my honor to present you ZB Pride Award this month. How great. Thank you.
Thank you to you and the other representatives who plead here to promote your cause. We appreciate that. I think it's very important cause, so thank you for being a force like that in the community.
So, if we can please have our teachers and our students and our teams, you know, come forward, board members, join us. Let's do a picture. Here, you're free to take pictures. Ms. Benjamin?
Yeah. No, I'm good. My first teacher's doing great work.
I know. I'm just taking a picture.
Look at me like, get up.
You take your picture first, and then we'll go.
Mr. Cook, you want to?
I know we can share to our page.
I can, thank you. I mean, I will try to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on with our agenda. Move on to the staff guests and district residents. I'll start with my board president's statement. District 126 is committed to an equitable, respectful learning environment. Where bullying, harassment, racism, sexism, and hate speech have no place. Please partner with us in fostering a positive community. With that, we'll move on to our public comments section. Staff, guests, and district residents may address the Board of Education during the communications from staff, guests, and district residents portion of the agenda. We have people who have signed in. Please also be informed that comments will be limited to three minutes per individual, and we'll try to give you a heads up about thirty seconds before your time if you've gone that long. And we will go from there. First up is Kelly Riggair. Good evening.
Good evening. Do you like the mic or we're good?
It's more, I think, for the broadcast, so I guess it's more.
Don't give me a microphone. Come on now.
I'm assuming, Dr. Bridges, that it's preferable to make sure we have.
We have the same problems for our meetings, I get it. Okay, I'm not here to check to see if you did your reading assignment, so I'm going to take a deep breath. But I am Kelly Riggair, and you know me as your English and drama teacher and the Zion Benton Federation of Teachers Union president. What you may not know about me is that I also serve the education professionals of Lake County as the executive vice president of Lake County Federation of Teachers and one of their representatives on the executive board of the Illinois Federation of Teachers. But I'm not just here to title drop either. I want to say that like most of you administrators and board members, we spent the last few days working to make sense of the new world that we suddenly find ourselves thrust into. My union siblings from across the state, we've been in kind of a little bit of panic mode. And we're asking the same questions that you are. How do we keep our kids and our community safe? How do we make sure that when our students come here, they are safe? I want to, I actually came tonight, I wasn't planning on it, because it's my understanding that the Board of Education is going to consider a first reading of a policy as well as a resolution designed to do that, to keep our students safe. As a union, we want you to know that we stand with you on those efforts. We are here to support you in those efforts. And the other thing I wanted you to know is that we appreciate the regular communication that I've had, maybe a lot more than I anticipated. Communication that we've had with the administration on this issue. I sat in an IFT executive board meeting on Saturday that was not the most uplifting thing I've ever been to, and was able to text back and forth with the superintendent. Here are some of our questions, have you thought of this? And he, and he responded, "Hey, yes, we covered this," or "No, thanks for letting us know that." And so, I wanted to let you guys know that we are working in partnership with you. We want to be in partnership with you on this because it's a very important issue, and we want to thank you for your commitment to keeping our students and communities safe.
Thank you. Thank you for your work and your dedication to helping market fix what we can.
We got it. We're with you.
All right, thank you. Next person, Chris Semensky.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. I want to start by acknowledging that I've missed the past two months' meetings, as you guys know. However, I was able to stay informed thanks to the board's decision to record and post the monthly meetings online. I'd like to sincerely thank the board for enacting this policy, and I also want to recognize George Foster and North Point Digital Productions for taping these meetings as well for the community. Because of these efforts, community members like myself can stay up to date with these monthly board meetings even when we can't attend in person. However, there is still an important opportunity for greater and full transparency. Committee meetings remain unrecorded, leaving a significant gap in public access to discussions that shape decisions for our schools and community. Since June of 2024, I've been coming here in front of you advocating for full transparency. After my last public comments, Mr. Nordstrom, you indicated that you would look into this. In my conversations with a few other board members, they've expressed that they are not opposed to recording these committee meetings. The question then is, why hasn't this happened yet? The board has shown it has the equipment, it has the technology, and the staff to make this possible. So, why aren't committee meetings being recorded and made available for the public to witness? As elected officials and representatives of this community, you have a responsibility to ensure transparency. As stated, the technology exists, the equipment exists, and the staff exists to perform this task. The only thing missing is your will to be fully transparent. Our community is beginning to notice. I urge you once again to take this next step and show our community that we are committed to openness at every level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed in is George Foster.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank Dr. Bridges for collaborating.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you use the microphone? I don't, I don't want the, after all the help you've been and advice you've been, just to make sure you're, you're able to be heard.
Is it on? Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. First and foremost, I want to thank Dr. Bridges for collaborating to where you can get this out on the local digital TV sets and on social media to get the word out, to increase visibility and awareness for what ZB does in the community. I do, in looking this over, and I thought this was a great presentation because it talked about the CTE program and showing how you have business administration, culinary arts, carpentry, digital media, drone technology, engineering, architecture, electricity, printing, small engine repair, mechanics, and welding. Now, I guess we'll address to our local Leo, law enforcement officer retired, as you. What I don't see here is anything relative to public safety. Now, I don't know if that's doable relative to home insecurity, relative to law enforcement, relative to firefighting and so on, to involve the youth, up-and-coming students, whether it be explorers or so on, you know, for that type of thing, to give them a heads up. There's a definite deficit in that area in our, in our world these days to find good applicants for the emergency services. So, I would hope that could be taken under consideration, and I'm certain that he could spirit it that, you know? A turd?
Absolutely.
It's on your back. Let me go to the school buses. Probably don't like you so much for this. Do we have a fleet of seventeen school buses? Is that how many we've got here? Do we know? I was trying to figure out.
He's over fifty. No, seventeen. He's more than that.
So, we've already convinced the board as air break, and I see where the place that was doing it, that was making it, the one place is going BK. I don't know if you're going to contract with Bloomberg or whoever, but I sent through Illinois awarded nineteen point nine million to support school districts transitioning to zero emission buses. And District One, and your district was awarded, I think it was ten, if I remember reading correctly. So, that's huge, you know? I guess my question's going to be, are we going to keep some fuel-driven buses in reserve in the event that there is a malfunction with the grid or with the buses or whatever? Because there was an instance in New York last week, you probably have seen where unfortunately while they were charging, it's four, five of them burned out. So, I don't know. I'm sure you got a great plan worked out, and it's somewhere on the website. If somebody could direct me to it, I'd like, I'd love to read it, because this is a hot point for me. But anyway, Dr. Bridges, thank you for your collaboration. I'm looking forward to doing more of that, give more good information out there, and thank you for your input.
Thank you. And we can get you more information regarding your question at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, the last person that's signed in is Roger Whitmore.
Hello, Board of Education. My name's Roger Whitmore. Can you hear this okay?
Yes.
ZB grad, nineteen seventy-one. Been in business fifty-four years, here now in Zion. And we recently met with local officials and some of our state officials in regards to the SEGA grant money. Zion has really stepped up and is going to give us back a million dollars to the taxpayers, homeowners, businesses alike. This is going to be brief. And you guys know, I've now taken two years of SEGA money. I was wondering how much money you guys are going to give back to the homeowners and businesses of Zion. Very brief.
As we've said, when we get to this part of the agenda, you can pose questions, but we're not going to answer the questions here. We can make sure that somebody gets back with those details.
Who would get back with me?
Through the superintendent.
Superintendent. All right, I'll wait for that call. Thank you.
On that point, we've been very committed to tax abatements, and Dr. Rodriguez will talk to you more about that, and we appreciate the clarity that's been brought to the, around the SEGA grant recently, so that we hope that the final rules on the eligibility for how to get those funds are clarified soon and are made as simple as possible for all the taxing bodies. So, thank you. Okay, if nobody else has signed in, that being the case, unless I see somebody else who needs to speak, I will move on. Okay? All right. Thank you. We will move on with our regular agenda. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Champagne, second by Ms. Stephen. Any questions or changes? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Ms. Stephen?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Aye.
Thank you. Brings us to our superintendent's report, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Nordstrom. Our first item of business is, you know, information on the SEGA grant. So, January thirtieth, I think, just Thursday of this week, right?
Yes.
There will be a meeting, you know, by the SEGA Zion to explain and answer some questions that community members, board members, faculty, staff might have about the recent developments of the SEGA grant. We were proud to be a recipient and a participant of this effort for two years, in which the grant, which was originally intended for tax relief, but it was not written as such in the legislation, is now clarified. That clarification now indicates that seventy-five percent of the grant must be used for tax abatement or tax relief. This 126 has been a proponent of tax relief during this effort with SEGA and before SEGA. So, it has to be very clear that even before SEGA, we have been abating and engaging in tax relief for the last, maybe eight, nine years, of which we have done over three million dollars. So, this is nothing new for us. We do have this commitment of helping the community and joining other taxing bodies in order to engage in this idea of tax relief. We're now celebrating, you know, we're now following the new legislation, the new rules. During our committee meetings, there has not been, not one board member objecting to the idea of tax relief. We have objected to the idea of others indicating that we don't have the commitment. Yeah, we do have a problem with that as a collective body, administration, board, because we do have a commitment to tax relief. So, now, we have seventy-five percent according to the new, the new rules, and we are participating fully. I will be in this meeting with our CFO and some administrators, also some board members, so that we can continue to sell.
That clarification now indicates that seventy-five percent of the grant must be used for tax abatement or tax relief. This one twenty-six has been a proponent of tax relief during this effort with SEGA and before SEGA. So it has to be very clear that even before SEGA, we have been abating and engaging in tax relief for the last maybe eight, nine years, of which we have done over three million dollars. So this is nothing new for us. We do have this commitment of helping the community and joining other taxing bodies in order to engage in this idea of tax relief. We're now celebrating, you know, we're now following the new legislation, the new rules. During our committee meetings, there has not been, not one board member objecting to the idea of tax relief. We have objected to the idea of others indicating that we don't have the commitment. Yeah, we do have a problem with that as a collective body, administration, board, because we do have a commitment to tax relief. So now we have seventy-five percent according to the new rules, and we are participating fully. I will be in this meeting with our CFO and some administrators, also some board members, so that we can continue to celebrate, you know, and make sure that there's tax relief. But at the same time, we're able to invest in our school. So with this, we will have a new financial plan, you know, for the school district, and we are going to continue to strive, we're going to continue to do excellent work. So again, I ask that if you have time, six PM, you know, join us at the Zion City Hall to learn more about the SEGA grant, to learn more about the new developments. And we hope, as a school district, we really, really hope that this new development has this grant as a means where this funding is directly impacting our taxpayers positively, that there's no such thing as reimbursements, that there's no such thing as we got to go around, you know, roadblocks, but that this money is directed exclusively, directly for tax relief, with no burdens, with no reimbursements, or whatever the case may be. So at this moment, we don't have any information on how the money will be distributed, but I hope that the city administrator has answers to that on Thursday, but he might not. And if so, we have to work together with our elected officials so that this funding is provided to every taxing body in a way that it is exclusively and directly for tax relief, without any reimbursements. If you would like to know more about reimbursement and the process of this grant, you know, please stay after the meeting, and I can explain that, because there is a process on how to do this. It's not just seventy-five percent, and here's your money. It has never been like that. So, but we can clarify that. And in the video that was referenced earlier, it was clarified that, yes, at the beginning, we didn't have that in the language, but we added that to the language. So now the language is clear, seventy-five percent for tax relief. So that is good work. Next item, we do have a joint board meeting, February twenty-fifth, in Winter Harbor School District One. So please remember, please know, there will be a, that will be our business meeting as well. So at the end of that meeting, we will address consent items or anything that the board might need to address. So February is a little bit different. Typically, we have two meetings, a regular board meeting and a special board meeting. In February, the schedule shows that we are at Winter Harbor, District One, in a joint board meeting with the other school districts. So that's just an information item for you. Next, our monthly meetings about strategic planning, Dr. Pritchard will talk a little bit about this, and this is something new that I want to do for the next couple months. Dr. Pritchard.
Should I use a mic?
Yes.
Yes. You're not good.
We don't want to miss a word, Chris.
That unfortunately is not the belief of my colleagues around the room. That's a little depressing. Quickly, I do appreciate the opportunity to continue this effort for our new strategic plan. So many of you are aware, we are in the last year of our current strategic plan. We have made significant strides over these five years, and as we're in this developmental phase now to transition to a new one, we have done lots of work in preparation. The last two long-range landing meetings we've had, we have set a very solid foundation that includes both new ideas, but then also working very hard to institutionalize and/or continue to work on the things that we're doing now, that is showing so much progress and success, particularly with where we're seeing success with our students academically. So much more to come with that, and we know that, but we believe the ideas that we have been discussing and putting together in preparation for what we will be calling Vision 2030 are good, they're solid, and they're going to take us to that next level of excellence as a district. That said, we do want to give opportunities for our community to hear about that. We want to give opportunities to the community that would be both students, our staff, families, and anyone around who is interested in hearing more about those next steps for us in the direction of our new strategic plan, prior to us finalizing that and putting that in front of you to take action on. So we have, we will be having some informational meetings, and that would include getting feedback from those who are in attendance. We're going to set those for February eighteenth, March tenth, and April eighth, from four to five. And that is all leading up then to us presenting a very good draft to you. I believe on April eleventh is the next long-range planning meeting, and then on April, we hope to be able to bring a final draft for your approval so that we can move forward, because that June thirtieth, July first, will be us transitioning to the new strategic plan. So this is just at least an initial informational part that we wanted to put out to all of you, and then I will work with Dr. Bridge, and we will continue to use all of our communication channels that we typically use, because we want to make sure that our staff, our students, and the community and families that we have are very aware of this, and we will be inviting them to our studios. Any questions on that? All right. Thank you.
So as we work on our new strategic plan, we have to remember that Vision 2030 is based on the success that we have with Vision 2020. And that is the time where things like evidence-based funding was developed and implemented in the state of Illinois. So as we move forward to Vision 2030, and in conversations with Dr. Pritchard, and most importantly, with Mr. Benitez and the board members in the committee, Vision 2030 speaks about, and must be centered around, future-focused learning, also predictable funding, and shared accountability. So it is important that we address those three areas, you know, especially now that many developments, the idea of funding becomes more and more important. So I am excited to, you know, work with our new CFO and the board in developing a sustainable, you know, five-year financial plan, because, you know, that is needed. Tax relief is extremely important, I understand that, but we also have a responsibility to educate our students, and we have contractual agreements with many collective bargaining unions, and we need the funding to be as stable as possible for the state. So I want you to know that, you know, Vision 2030, that's a strong focus. I am one of the superintendents representing Lake County at the state level, and that is a big priority for us, that we maintain evidence-based and that we increase the level of funding with evidence-based, so that schools are able to engage in future-focused learning, that they're able to engage in shared accountability. Three things that are very important, and then I move on into the superintendent's report, this idea of dual credit partnerships. As Chris was talking, I was thinking about our conversations on the state level. So dual credit partnerships is important. Post-secondary success is also important. We already started a lot of the work with Dr. DiGangi, so, and her team. High-quality educators, that includes teachers, administrators, so our professional development is key, and also students' success, you know, making sure that our student, that we have evidence that our students are making progress. So this idea of ninety-niney-ninety continues to be important. So again, I know that the new strategic plan, there will be exciting activities, and we're going to continue with some of the same goals that we had before, so that we can take it to the next level, secure up. But please understand that predictable funding, future-focused learning, and shared accountability are really the three areas of this new strategic plan for the state of Illinois. And this one? Later today, you will see some policies that we're bringing forward, one as a first reading, about the new developments and everything that we've been through in the last couple days. As our union president indicated, it's been a lot of work, a lot of communication, a lot of meetings, you know, long nights between us, the Board of Education, our legal team, administrators organizing ourselves, in making sure that we organize our staff. And we are in a good place. I mean, as you can see here with our entire staff, I have sent three communications already to the staff. And at first, you didn't know a lot, and that is okay, we were learning together. Other school districts were learning together, that, you know, our legal firm was learning with us. So we understood, and we received this executive order, and we started working around what are the things that we can do, the things that we should not do. And at the end of the day, we are following the law, and we are making sure that we have a safe and secure learning and working environment. So it is important for our students and also for our staff that we communicate, that we have protocols, that we have talking points, that we have followed the law, but at the same time, ensure that our students are safe in our school district. So here you have, you know, a communication that I issued, you know, January twenty-third, to our executive cabinet, staff, and families. The following day, we issue another one to leaders about, you know, how, you know, our plan, you know, where do we go from here? And then we continue communicating, where today, we also issue a communication to our staff. We met with the teachers, we met with classified staffing, we met with all school employees. We're doing bus drivers in the next couple days. We want to make sure that people are informed and that they feel safe when they are approached, if they are approached by law enforcement. So, and that means that a lot of this work will be done, especially by administration, a lot of this work will be led by the principal and the superintendent, along with the chief of HR and the chief financial officer in collaboration, consultation with all executive administrators that are here today. So again, we're very proud of the work that we have done thus far. We are going to continue to communicate based on the meetings that we had today, and we see some feedback from our administrators, from our teachers, and we will have an updated information item before the end of the week. At the end of the day, what you're going to see is Zion Benton, again, operating as a model, as a sample, as a school district to follow, where we are doing what's right, where we are following the law, but at the same time, we are promoting a safe and secure learning and working environment for all. And now to finish the superintendent's report, we have our principals, who are representing about something that we already brought to you during committee, it's an idea. But this idea, in the last five months, has evolved. We started with something small, and now our principals will show you and will present to you an idea that we have about cell phones and learning, and it is, it's going to be a lot of work, it's something new, it's something adaptive, but it's something exciting that I know we should do as a district, and I support both principals completely when it comes to this idea. And again, all they're looking for is to remove distractions, to learn, and make sure that our students are better equipped for post-secondary education. So Ms. Felsky and Mr. Guaya.
Thank you. Okay, we just wanted to give you an update and make sure that you're informed of what we're doing, because at some point, this could be an issue that you might even hear some feedback, because it's kind of controversial in places about cell phones. So give you a two-minute, you know, kind of update on where we're at. But at the beginning of the school year, you know, we both remain laser-focused on our school improvement goals. Each building has identified some building-level goals that we're focusing on. One here, climate culture, improve it, make sure we're working with things. Kevin's kind of rebuilding some of, well, rebuilding Zion Benton, right, and moving forward and creating that identity. But the start of the school year, we both created school improvement teams, so both schools have a team. There's about twenty-five here on this team. Kevin, I'm not sure whether you have it in your team. So since September, these teams have been working on this, simply focusing on what are our barriers or distractions to learning, and then what can we do to help improve attendance. So they're also laser-focused on, you know, climate and culture, attendance, and raising academic achievement. We're all focused moving in the same direction on the goals. So all the work we're doing is purposeful, but what stuck out the most here is cell phones and teachers feeling there's a great need to revise our policy. And these are just, you don't have to read all the little bullet points there, but through our meetings, we've identified it's something the teachers want, because there doesn't seem to be a lot of consistency or a very clear policy, or what should we do? And it's kind of every classroom's been doing kind of their own thing. There's been different principals or administrators, and things have kind of ebb and flow, but we're getting, we're going to land on a clear, precise, consistent, that works well for everyone, policy. Okay? And that's what we're going to ask you guys to look at, you know, shortly in March. But I think we're also keeping in mind, more importantly, the well-being, the emotional well-being, because some books have been brought to light, the Anxious Generation, I heard that was kind of talked about, that we can't deny that it's also detrimental sometimes to our young people, the amount of time they're on a phone. So if we're responsible in acting as their parents while they're here, we're moving forward.
And the last thing, in the last slide that it talks about is we've reached out to many area high schools throughout the county and beyond, as well as our foundation schools, and they all have made some recent developments to their policy regarding cellphone use. So with a lot of feedback from our stakeholders, particularly in our SIP teams, we've drafted this policy statement, which says during instructional time, students are not permitted to use cell phones. Instructional time is defined as any time designated for teaching, learning, or assessment activities. All cell phones must be silenced and stored out of sight for the entire duration of each instructional period. Still in draft form, and we're still getting some feedback from our various stakeholders, but that's where we're, that's kind of where we're going. We have developed, uh-oh. Yeah, I'll take yours. Thank you. We've developed a timeline for this school year in order to figure out where we want to go with this for the next school year. So as Ms. Felsky stated back in the fall, throughout September to November, we formed our SIP teams, and we began to do some research and talk and see what other schools are doing, and draft a stakeholder survey. That stakeholder survey was finalized just prior to winter break, and we just closed last week the window of opportunity for our students, our staff, our parents, and administrators to give feedback through that survey. We also brought this to the, this whole idea to the policy committee meeting on January sixteen. Next month in February, our SIP teams are really going to dig into all of the data and feedback we receive from our stakeholders, and to make recommendations specific to whatever new policy that will go in our student handbook. I should emphasize that this is just, any revisions we make will be in the student handbook. And once administration reviews what our SIP teams have recommended, we will then make those changes to our handbook, which the slide that you see here is, the timeline is a little bit off. There were some revisions that were made, but prior, after sending this to board docs. But on the March Board of Education meeting, March eighteenth, that is when we plan on bringing the handbook to the board for approval. Any changes we make to electronic device policy will be part of that student handbook. And then after spring break, we're going to look into possibly piloting our new policy and ordering whatever it is that we need to purchase, if we're going to get some kind of holding place for our phones in classrooms. Again, those are things that we're trying, we're considering, we'd be purchasing that in the spring for the following school year. Our new policy would go into effect then in August of twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. So just to kind of sum up here, we still have a few details that we're going to shore up before we're ready to present this in March, but, you know, as far as headsets and earbuds, and where we're going to put these phones, or how it's going to look, and then big-ticket item consequences for the violations. Obviously, there's a student code of conduct, so how are we handling it? But it will all be consistent, concise, and uniform, so that across the district, people will be able to answer that question. This is how, this is how it's done in Zion Benton District, this is their policy, or how they handle cell phones. Few more things, just our last slide here, just, we also plan on doing a very comprehensive, clear communication plan, so there is no, you know, misunderstandings, and we will start that in the spring with staff, you know, professional development and how to manage it in your classroom. We're going to talk, you know, blast out to parents, to students, incoming students, everyone. We're going to have a social norms campaign to make it part of We're going to have a social norms campaign to make it part of just how we do business here. And I believe this will have a great impact on our culture and climate, just establishing uniform policies and keeping us all on the same page, and lots of time left in our brains for learning. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Yeah, are there questions or? Thank you for the clarity on the timeline and the, it sounds like pretty inclusive process that's being included to gather input, continue to refine it, so.
Just following the process of New Tech, New Tech DZV. So we're rolling.
It's, there, as time goes by, there's more and more support for this type of work. I mean, because even us, as administrators and cabinet members, had our debates about it. But I think it will be something positive for our school district, for our students. So we look forward to the work of the principals on this and implementation in the spring and next year. That concludes the superintendent's report. And the principal reports are available electronically this month. There's no reports by the principals.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to board committee reports, starting with Business and Finance Committee. And that will be me. Business and Finance met on January 21st. And as usual, many of the things that we took up are being taken up here tonight. Topics included bond tax exempt compliance report, 2025-2026 tentative budget, 2025-2026 budget carousel update, the energy transition community grant program, the CJA, more discussion about that, clean heavy-duty vehicles grant program, FY 2025 round one school maintenance grant project, and the summer 2026 improvement proposal. In addition, there was an update on capital improvements and the facilities master plan. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you. Moving on. The Personnel Committee, Mr. Benitez.
So Personnel Committee met on January 23rd at 5:30. And we talked about staffing updates, FY 26 staffing plan and interview cycle, strategic initiatives update, attendance matters outreach team updates. We also talked about Inspire Youth Grant, employee relations initiatives update, operations update, and FY 26 proposed budget.
Any questions for Mr. Benitez? Moving on, Curriculum Committee, Ms. Stevens.
The committee meeting was held on January 14th, 2025, by members of administration and sub-board of education to discuss and review a minor change to the district. Approved earth science course at ZB East, the 2025-2026 school, which will be presented to full board during new business, and an update on the pathway to proficiency. The district worked to date on the transition from SATs to ACTs and the professional learning that was occurred date. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Stevens? And that finally brings it close. A busy, busy committee month, as is usual. Policy Committee, Ms. Champagne.
Yes, the Policy Committee met on January 28th. I'm sorry, today's January 28th. The Policy Committee met on January 16th. It was covered with a Press Plus update, update 117. That one covered a lot of, it included ethics gift ban, board member development, operational services, abused and neglected child reporting, employee ethics, personal technology and social media, student discipline, instruction, and students. It covered the athletic achievement recognition. Mr. Neme reported that his committee has been working hard, and they accumulated quite a bit of criteria, and they now need to narrow it down. Finally, we talked about the cellphone expectation procedures, which was the report that was just presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Champagne? All right. We are now moving on to our new business. First item is approval of bond tax exempt compliance report. And we will hear from our new CSBO, Dr. Wall. Welcome.
Thank you, President Norstrom, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. First up is the approval of bond tax exemption compliance report. This is required by Board Policy 4:040, which says that if we're going to loan money out, we have to make sure that we are in compliance with all tax and regulatory laws in association with those bonds. And so this is an annual letter that is filed with the board, and it needs to be accepted by the board. So the recommendation is that the board would accept that this evening. The second item on the list is the authorization, I'm sorry.
We'll take that up.
Is it action item or do you need to do it now?
Yeah, we'll take it up now.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve bond tax exempt compliance report as presented?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Champagne, second by Ms. Stevens. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Norstrom?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Next item, authorized superintendent to prepare 2025-2026 tentative budget.
Again, this is an annual item that occurs. The board, each year prior to the preparation of the next year's fiscal budget, approves and authorizes the superintendent to begin preparation of next year's tentative budget. So there's a letter there for your approvals. The recommendation is that you would accept the recommendation for the superintendent to begin work on preparing that tentative budget.
Okay. Do I have a motion to do just that, to accept the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to prepare the 2025-2026 tentative budget?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Benitez, second by Ms. Champagne. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Norstrom?
Aye. Thank you. Approval of summer 2026 improvement proposal.
I know it seems early, but it is important that we get this out there for the board to prove the next steps in this process. The board had a chance to look at proposal during their BBF. It's also attached to your agenda. The improvement process for the 2026 summer projects will include backup generators in our buildings, electric charge stacings for stations for our EV buses, as well as improvements to the bus lot, the south lot, lighting enhancements, and also our transportation facility. So the recommendation from hold is, their estimate is around $8 million. And so I am recommending that the board approves superintendent's recommendation to move forward to the next phase, which would be the design phase of the summer 2026 work.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation to approve the proposed, the whole proposal and move forward into the design phase for the summer 2026 project scope?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Champagne, second by Ms. Stevens. Any questions? A lot of conversation leading up to this, so thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Norstrom?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, appointment of authorized agent.
Anytime that there is a change in your CFO/CSBO position, IMRF requires that there be an agent of record for any questions or concerns regarding IMRF implications. And so there is a resolution present this evening. I would ask that the board accept the recommendation that I be appointed as the new IMRF agent for the district.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation to appoint Dr. James Wall as the IMRF authorized agent?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Benitez, second by Ms. Champagne. Any questions? I'll just comment, it's funny, I'm cleaning out my office with my pending retirement, and I just found my certificate from 25 years ago, and I was named authorized agent for the county. Great memory, so enjoy that. You should bring that. Yeah. Actually, I took it out of the frame because I'm like that. Roll call, please.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Norstrom?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, Press Plus 117 policy update, first reading, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, for a rookie. Thank you, board. So why don't you just take a minute and kind of take a peek behind the curtain of what happens at the Policy Committee? And just so everybody's aware, we are subscribing to Press Plus. They come out with updates three to four times a year that they send to school districts to ensure school districts are updating policy to make sure that they're in alignment with state board guidelines. And so this past update was 17 updates. There's 54 pages that are there for the first reading. The committee goes through those, they're, we all get those, spend a few days taking a look, and then I work to summarize that. And so I'm going to try to give a summary of that summary, just so you can kind of see what happened. So as we break it down, there are new policies that are required for the Board of Education. There's an ethics gift ban, and then board member development, which talks about professional development that have to be included for new board members as we move forward, trainings that are required. And so that's kind of one area. And so as the board members, you know, new board members are inducted or sworn in, they'll have to follow this professional development. The next area, this time, is operational services. And so I am, we've been working with the business office, Dr. Wall, and just kind of updating him on what new policies are there. Revenue and investments, talks about some stipulations that the business office has to follow. There's some purchasing contracts, which in some cases, they are just simply renumeration. They've changed the number, they've changed the law. There's a facilities management and billing program that changed the amount of money that can be spent without board approval. It used to be $12,500, now it's $17,500. If we spend any money at $17,500, $17,500 or more, board has to approve that. And then a safety update, it's just location of ADBs. I've been working with Dr. Wall and just making sure that our facilities are in compliance with this. But in a lot of cases, we want to be above and beyond and just to make sure that we're safe as can be when it comes to ADBs in our school buildings. Next area is kind of general purpose. You know, again, these are just things that often people have different responsibilities for. And the first one is for any DCFS complaint or report. There used to be a backup follow-up that had to be sent in, and they removed that. So if you make a DCFS report, you don't have to send in a written report for that, although the school, we will still track that, it's something we still follow. There's an employee ethics code, professional conduct. It changes really what is a term that has been outdated in education from changing guidance counselors to school counselors. We, as Zion Benton, have been doing that at least for the five years that I've been in this position, and maybe a year or two before that. But the state Board of Education's kind of finally caught up with that. They also talked, it took some time to update personal technology, changing Twitter to X, added something called Threads in Discord. And I kind of joked when they said this, well, I'm sure they're going to be updating this in a couple of years when the new social media things come up too, so. And then they added smartwatches in there. And then there were some legal references for maintaining student discipline. Again, kind of working with the principals and school counselors to make sure that we're adhering to these general purpose policies. And then instruction, there are some updates to the specific instruction that happens in the classroom. As soon as I got these, I've been working with Dr. DeGangi, and she's working with department chairs. And many of these cases do the things that we already do. But if we're not, we make sure that we're doing them. And the other thing that we do, especially when it comes to this, is updating some of the language in our course guidelines to include some of that language, so that when we get audited, it's easily seen in what we're teaching in our classrooms. And then one point that I wanted to point out is accelerated placement program. This was new last year, that the state instituted that if students meet or exceed at state testing, they are automatically accelerated to the next highest course level. While the intention was really good, it also caused some issues for students, because it really didn't give students the choice. You were automatically enrolled. And so last year, school districts, at least in Lake County that I was working with, we all kind of said, what are we doing for our students? We did supply them an opportunity to make a choice. If they wanted to choose not to take that path, a letter had to go home, had to get signed, and they signed off on it. We didn't force them, make them go that direction. And so this year, what they've done is they've told us, school districts, if you're accelerating a student, you must tell the parent. And so any student that is qualified for that, the parents will know ahead of time and not wait for the kid who says, hey, I don't want to do that. And so again, it's just, probably be a little bit changes to it next year, because school districts are still struggling with this whole process. And then, and then just some general things about students. Equal education opportunities, again, when we did our work a few years back, updating policy, we were really in the kind of the forefront of some of the diversity language, inclusion. And so Press Plus and the state Board of Education continues to catch up to us, which is great, because then it makes it easy for us to update some of that language. And then, and then some difference for suspension procedures. Again, I've been working with the principals. Previously, if somebody was suspended for five days, there was certain steps that you had to take, and notifications and supports, and they changed that to anybody who was suspended for four days or more. And that's kind of the really quick summation of what we do at Policy Committee. I know it was really fast. There are 54 pages in the board docs, so I encourage everybody to read through them. They're actually highlighted with colors, so you can see where the changes are. But that's the work that we do in Policy Committee. So, and then, you know, Policy Committee and committee work is important. That's where a lot of the work does get done. But that doesn't mean that all policy has to go to that committee. And this is an example of one of those cases, where we're going to bring a policy today to a first reading to the Board of Education, because we believe it's important enough that it's not something we want to wait around for the Policy Committee to meet. And so we've been working on this for the last probably week or so. And we bring forth a policy, and we're going to read through it. I know everybody can read it, but I'm going to take some time to read through it, because I do think it's that important. And it's Policy 7-151, Safe Haven Policy. And it speaks, and it speaks to this. It says immigration enforcement activities in and around municipal districts may be disruptive to the educational environment of all students. Moreover, the Board of Education is required to educate all students residing within the school district counties and is not authorized to enforce immigration laws. Accordingly, school district employees shall refuse access to immigration officials or other law enforcement personnel to its schools, properties, and activities for the purpose of enforcing immigration laws, unless required by law and in accordance with the administrative procedures adopted pursuant to this policy. The superintendent is authorized to adopt administrative procedures to implement this policy, and shall also ensure that all teachers, school administrators, and staff will be appropriately and adequately trained in the implementation of this policy and the administrative procedures adopted pursuant to this policy. And so what we're saying here, in a really just quick blanket statement, is that this is a place where kids are going to be safe, where they can come to learn, and we're going to protect them as best we can. And so this is the first reading of that policy. And this will kind of speak to, the next is the board resolution for a Safe Haven resolution. So I believe I'm passing that back to Dr. Redd.
And I'll just briefly say, you've already said this, but just to remind the first reading. First reading means we present, we understand what it is. So between now and next month, there's the opportunity for both the 54 pages that were summarized and for the one that's being taken up right now on Safe Haven policy to review. If you have comments or suggestions, contact the superintendent or administrator, and we will then take it up more formally in our February meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Safe Haven resolution?
Yes, in your board package, we put together a resolution declaring Silent Benton Township High School District 126 a Safe Haven School District. And what does that mean? I mean, many school districts in Lake County and Illinois have passed these resolutions to ensure that the staff, students, feel safe as it relates to education, feel protected as it relates to the services that we must provide. So we're asking it for the board to see the resolution and take a vote or ask any questions. So we're asking it for the Board to see the resolution and take a vote or ask any questions about what we are bringing forward, which is a resolution to ensure that, as I said before, as our union president indicated, that we provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students, but also for our staff to feel safe about what they can do, what they cannot do. So board policy will be needed as we do the work that we need to do. So it's highly recommended, and as I mentioned before, many school districts are adopting these resolutions. And these resolutions, by any means, say that we're going to go against the law. So there's, there's certain parameters and things that we got to do with a judicial court order, but what it says is that we are committed in following the law, following certain protocols on how operations need to happen. At times, you have this mindset, and with our teachers today and our staff, that we are going to have mass deportations and people are going to come into our buildings with rifles. That's not going to happen. But again, folks are scared. So what we're saying is that this resolution allows our district to follow the law and also ensure that our students feel safe, as we will ensure that they're protected when they're with us, and that we will do this right.
Thank you. Before I ask if there are any questions, let me get this on the floor. Do I motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the resolution declaring Zion Bennett County High School District 126 the Safe Haven School District as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Benitez, second by Ms. Champagne. Any questions?
Yeah, if I could recap this, basically, we're saying we follow the law and the government follows the law.
Yes.
That's basically what it is. We are following the law.
Well, and I see it in one of their pieces, we follow the law, and we're going to put procedures in place to make sure that our management of the process that might present itself to us is going to be as clean as it can be for our students, our staff, and any dealings with those who come to our doors.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, that is fair. Parents should not be afraid that what's going to happen with my kid. I am not going to be notified he or she is not coming home today. They should not be afraid because we are going to ensure that there's communication and that we do everything that we need to do with dignity and that we follow the law as the government most follow the law.
Any other questions or comments? Here you go, roll call, please.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Aye. Thank you to administration for the quick work on this. I know in my professional life in healthcare that this is also a significant topic of concern, and there's a lot more questions than there are answers, and I think this is supposed as far as we can right now to help make sure our learning environment is ready as we can be. So, thank you.
Yes, if I can just add a last comment, thank you for passing the resolution, and this situation is very fluid. So as I indicated before, we have issued already three communications, there will be another one before the end of the week. This resolution might be revised next month, depending on what we learn. So it is a very fluid situation, and you know, where many people are extremely afraid. And when I say many people, I am talking to you, you know, many of our staff members, you know, and administrators, including myself, you know, because there's a lot of unknown in this process, and it is scary because it is change how we function as a school community overnight.
Thank you. Next item, Approval of 2025-2026 School Calendar. Dr. DeGangi.
Thank you, President Nordstrom. Good evening, Board of Education. At the Curriculum Committee Meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the committee discussed the proposed 2025-2026 school calendar that you have in front of you. This calendar is very similar to the current approved school calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five. Most importantly, it maintains our commitment to a start date that ensures that we have balanced semesters and include final exams prior, for first semester prior to winter break. One difference of note would just be that as we will be in a non-election year next year, we'll resume having Katamaros Plaski Day as a contractual holiday for our staff and students, so our buildings will be closed. And I think one other minor change is really, we added a winter assessment day this year to make sure our students got practice in both fall and winter using internal benchmarks that we use to prepare students for that ACT. We just moved that date from December to January based on some staff feedback to make sure we have a little bit more time between that fall and winter assessment, a little less busyness that's going on in our school community, field trips, et cetera. But other than that, the calendar should look very similar to this one here.
Okay. The motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2025-2026 school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Cook. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sure you've told me this before, but how do we work with students who are not Christian? This is basically based around the Christian holidays. How do we work with Jewish students or Muslim students or Hindu students?
Yeah, I mean, students who have, and we also have plans that we work with staff for that, when they have holidays, that they can have work plans, for example, in place if they want to take off for Jewish holidays. I mean, our students are not penalized if they miss those days and need to do work on those established days. Right now, our holidays that our calendar is based on, particularly those that are in yellow, are state holidays that are approved by our state, but we work with our students and with our staff when they have holidays that they need to attend to.
Thank you.
The calendar before, we came back in January for a couple of days, and then we did final exams. So as you can see, there is an interruption of two weeks of winter vacation, and then students come back for a couple of days, and then we do final exams. So this calendar, you know, is much better for students, so we do final exams before winter vacation. So I was one of the students, when I was in school, it was like that, and it was abuse. I mean, you're coming back and you are, you forgot so many things. And if you go on vacation, I mean, it's standard or whatever the case might be, you got to take a final exam. So I did see it as a big benefit, but I allowed, and I like Dr. DeGangi to indicate whether or not it has helped our students and our staff.
Yeah, and I think, President Nordstrom, you were, you were on the board at the time. I mean, we went to our community with this, we went to our staff, we took two years to make that adjustment because we do know our center districts, our foundational districts do start a week later, but they have off, they moved up their start dates as well. But the benefits to learning, I think Dr. Rodriguez just pointed out, just personally how students feel about that and how staff felt about that when they went through it, either as students or just recognizing the challenges that presented for students. But the other benefit that we found for that as well, many other high school districts, particularly in the state of Illinois, had already made those changes. And when you talk about preparing for advanced placement tests, which occur the first two weeks of May, students in other school districts were getting two weeks more instructions than our students were, and so it just put them at a disadvantage. So lots of advantages from, I think, the personal feeling of it and the stress that you feel when students would come back after having two weeks off, you're like, huh, you know, what, I got to get back into what? I've been in vacation mode for the last two weeks, but then also the additional value for learning, particularly within our most rigorous coursework.
So yeah, it simply addresses the idea, the phenomenon of learning loss.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Let me get a motion in a second, so roll call, please.
I'm apologetic. Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Cook? Mr. Nordstrom?
Aye. Thank you. Our final business item, I see the prayer coming up, Approval of the Substitute Rate Increase.
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, and Community Members. So this evening, I'll be presenting you with a recommendation to increase our substitute teacher rate. The substitute teacher shortage has been a challenge for our school district and for school districts within our region. So to address that challenge, we reviewed our substitute teacher rates and compared them to some of our surrounding school districts. And in that research, we found that our rates are actually not competitive, which makes it hard for us to recruit and to retain our substitute teachers. So to ensure that we remain competitive and to ensure that we have enough coverage for teacher absences, we are recommending an increase to our substitute teacher rate. You'll find all the details in the memo that we submitted to Board of Education. The adjustments do align with rates from our surrounding school districts, and it also includes an incentive for substitutes to remain consistent and committed to District 126. So overall, we believe that this recommendation will help us with these challenges and further support our students and teachers. Any questions about these rates?
Let me get it on the floor first. We have a motion to accept the recommendation to approve the 2025-2026 teacher substitute rates as presented. Motion by Mr. Benitez, second by Ms. Champagne. Now, any questions?
Yes, thank you. By doing this, by being more competitive with substitute teacher rates, this is going to reduce the overload on some of our, we hope it will.
Correct, we hope that, we hope that it will with more substitute teachers here. It'll help us relieve some of those overloads.
Thank you.
Especially for the, for the long-term substitutes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Aye. Thank you. Brings us to other business, capital improvements, updates. Dr. Wohl.
Once again, good evening, Board. Thank you so much. We've had some exciting things occur over the winter break. We thought we were going to get a bunch of work done, and some of it was delayed, but on our phase wrap-up, we have now been able to complete some of the life safety issues that we had that were cited by the Regional Office of Education. We've had additional MagSafe locks installed, which basically that means whole open doors and corridors, when the fire alarm goes off, they now are magnetically released, they close automatically. We also have, and I found this out this morning, the locks for our library that had been missing since the start of the school year will be installed on Thursday this week. So I'm very excited for it. We will actually have locking doors on the library with those new doors on Thursday. Also, fire shutter in the Multilingual Services Office area. For safety, there's actually a shutter on the inside of the office that drops down in front of those windows in case of fire. There's also a fire-rated door there. It's very nice to actually walk by there and see that's a great long area of students, staff being in that area, knowing that that shutter will come down to protect them if they are in that area when the alarm goes off. Also, we have ten side light, fire side lights that will be going in through ten doors across the building. They are replacing the metal mesh glass that is currently there. It's fire-rated glass, it's a safety concern. Apparently, when that metal wire heats up, it actually causes the glass to burst. So this new glass does not have wire, and it will be safer for our students, so we're in the process of replacing those. Those ten, we believe, will be done coming up on President's Day. So those ten side panels. And then the last big project are the entrance doors just outside of the professional development room here. That will all be slated to be done over spring break, and we should be wrapped up them with Phase Two constructions. So I'm very excited that that's being done. And we are also in process, we had it done this morning, we are one step closer to finalizing all of the furniture that will be purchased for the summer, to try and get that ready for the bit to bring back to the Board for approval. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Wohl? All right. Thank you. Now the Facilities Master Plan Updates.
Yes, this will be a quick update on the Facilities Master Plan. So the Board approved this work a couple months ago, and the idea is that as we are finalizing the projects that we identified years ago that were needed for our school district, in the next five years, we would like to have a Facilities Master Plan that addresses projects, for the most part, at a smaller scale, where we're able to, again, appropriately budget, you know, engage in a financial plan with funding for a Facilities Master Plan, where we can, you know, achieve, you know, our goals of, again, maintaining tax relief down, but at the same time, find ways to invest in our school, our students, you know, hairless safety. One of the things that we take a lot of pride as a school board superintendent is that our buildings, you know, we continue to invest so that they are in good shape. One thing that we don't want to do, and part of our legacy, is that we don't want to have buildings with millions of dollars in life, hairless safety and improvements that you're not going to be able to fund in the future. So instead, we take a very proactive approach in a conservative budget, a conservative investment strategy as a school district, utilizing grants, utilizing local funds in a way that is extremely, extremely conservative in keeping an annual surplus so that we can invest on our facilities. The idea of new money is something that we're very proud of, new dollars that we have been able to bring to our school district. The idea of ideas and the idea that Board, that Board of Education has approved certain projects, I'll give you an example, you did approve an SRO for our school district. We budgeted for that, but we received a grant. We received what is called the...
Stronger Connection.
Stronger Connections Grant, where we budgeted for that SRO. Not only that, you also approved, and you like the idea of attendance matters, which we needed to budget that locally, that is also part of the Stronger Connections Grant, where Dr. Bridge and Mr. Hernandez are working together with our principals and their leaders in making sure that we address this phenomenon of attendance. Two years ago, we budgeted for, you know, for the transition of Apple to PCs. It was also received a grant. It was called the Digital Equity Grant. So again, you know, our district has a proven record of looking for new dollars, while at the same time, you know, we utilize grants first from the federal government, state, and we have a phenomenal construction model with our architects, construction managers, and administration, and the Board working together to ensure that our projects are always on the budget, that they're done well. So I'm very proud of the type of work. That is, that is a type of work that separates you from others. So now you have an opportunity, and the opportunity is to bring people together in a Facilities Master Plan, where you have a future where funding is compromised, funding is tight, it's not as good as it was a couple of years ago. But that doesn't mean that we are going to throw the towel and say that we cannot do it. What it means is that we're going to reorganize ourselves differently. So the first one already took place, and there was, it was a needs assessment. There's a Phase Two where they develop criteria to address the needs assessment. There are emerging themes, you know, so so far, I'm just giving you a preliminary. It's, it doesn't mean that we're doing this, just preliminary, learning environments need to be addressed, restroom upgrades, that needs to be addressed, and that is coming from our students, our administration. I, I am, I'm the biggest proponent of this one with the restrooms, because I come from other schools that are this size, you know, and I do see a need here for us to upgrade and to make it better, bigger. Building flow, student spaces, staff, staff management space, priority items, you know, drainage, security, infrastructure, student support, restroom upgrades. So the next step would be to have, and this is already happening, focus groups with students, also a survey with students. I know that we have many students that already provided us with feedback, and also conduct two town hall meetings, which are coming up. And those would take place, next one, those would take place February third, February fourth, that is next week. In these town hall meetings, we are going to have an opportunity to listen to... In these town hall meetings, we are going to have a, an opportunity to listen to more, you know, concrete detail information. The first one was more for ideas, but now that we have ideas, I'm looking forward to the architects giving us some concrete examples of what we're looking at doing. So, and then, once that is done, February eighteenth, we will bring it to the BBF meeting as a draft. So the architects with administration will bring this forward. These meetings are continuous. I mean, we had had two-hour meetings in our cabinet discussing this with our architects and construction management team. So this is something that has taken place with a lot of collaboration and very open. March tenth, BBFNN, it will be updated, so the Board will provide us with feedback, with the feedback from the community, with the feedback from anyone that has feedback on these plans. And then we'll bring it back March tenth. And then the idea is to bring it back on March eighteenth and present it to the Board of Education for possible action. So that's, that's the idea with the facilities master plan. At the end, what you will have is a, is a facilities master plan with, with priorities and a budget that will be attached to it. The beauty of that is that if you're not able to do a project because one year the budget is tight, you can delay it for the next year. So, so you need to have a plan. You know, one of the reasons why we do so, so well is because we have plans. We have plans for technology, you know, we have plans for our school district. We don't plan a budget, we budget a plan. The plan is a strategic plan for improvement. And where we look at the return on that investment, where we look at, you know, making sure that we are cost neutral in the work that we do. So I'm very, very happy with the administration for doing a lot of this work. I will be spend eighty percent them, twenty percent me. It's that type of environment that we have where our administrators along with architects, along with students, bring the feedback. It's not a top-down approach. And it is an approach where we're really, really looking at the return on the investment and what is best for students, you know, and are we able to fund it and can we sustain the funding? And, and so far, in the last five years, we have shown consecutively, over and over and over, that we are a physically responsive school district that continues to, to enhance facilities, that continues to do things that many people didn't believe we were able to do, that continues to increase achievement. More students are graduating, our freshman on track is at a better place, more students are having dual credit, you know, in our school district. That is something to be celebrated. And we can do all of that and at the same time, ensure that our collective bargaining agreements are solid and they're very good and that we're treating and investing in our products. We did that as well. But at the same time, we can also improve our facilities and ensure that we don't have millions of dollars in hairline safety or improvement that we have to do because we don't think, and at least I know this Board and I, don't think that it's fair for our community to engage in a, in a referendum. That is something that we don't, we don't think is a good idea, you know, because again, it increases taxes and it will be devastating. And moreover, I am a resident of Winter Harbor and I have been told by many of the people in Winter Harbor, including my neighbors, that that took place years ago and they didn't like it. So, so I, I had to face them every day. And I know it's not good for our school district. So I, I, I am in complete agreement of this approach where we are safe and we live within our means and, and continue to increase achievement and also upgrade our, our facilities in a, in a, in a way that is affordable, something that we can do to a facilities master plan for the next five years.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Rodriguez? All right. Assuming there's no other business under other business. All right. Then, do I have a motion to move into closed session? Do I have a motion to go into closed session for consideration of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Champagne, second by Mr. Benitez. Any questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Aye.
Thank you. We will be moving into closed session.